The September 24th, 2025 meeting of the Greenville County Planning Commission is hereby called to order. At today's meeting, we will review rezoning applications, subdivision applications, and other items brought to us by staff. Unless the commission members have a question for the applicant, we will not accept additional public comment on the rezoning applications. The rezoning cases were presented at a public hearing, and that was the opportunity to hear public comments in favor of or in opposition to the rezoning cases. At today's meeting, the commission will be making its recommendation on the rezoning cases. Detailed information on each of the cases was provided to us in our electronic agenda package in advance of this meeting. Our recommendations will be forwarded to County Council's Planning and Development Committee for their consideration and decision. The subdivision matters we will review today will previously be reviewed by the subdivision advisory committee. At that meeting, the reviewing agencies presented their preliminary findings to staff. Based on comments from the subdivision advisory committee along with a review of applicable sections of the ordinance, staff has prepared recommended conditions of approval for each preliminary plat. These recommendations will be provided to the planning commission as part of its review of each request. Anyone wishing to address the commission on subdivision matters should have signed up to speak. Again, you cannot address the commission during this meeting on rezoning requests. The official public hearing on these cases has already been held. I'd like to welcome everybody to today's meeting, and Ms. Franklin is going to handle our invocation.
If you bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for bringing us to this destination safely. We ask that you be with us throughout this meeting. Help us to make the decisions that are best for our county. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right, we have amended minutes. Does anyone have any other changes or revisions?
I'll make a motion we approve, and thank you, Julie.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All righty. Let's see. Ms. Phillips made a motion to approve the minutes as amended for our last month's meeting. Heck, I already forgot who had the second.
Please, let Denise.
Oh, Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Has a second.
Has a second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. All righty, rezoning.
Good afternoon. The following is a brief explanation of the planning commission process to consider rezoning cases. Each docket will be presented, including the requested zoning, specific details of the site, as well as maps and photos of the site and surrounding area. Presentation will conclude with the staff recommendation. Staff recommendation is a result of feedback from a team of internal and external county stakeholders who review each case. After each presentation, the planning commission may either vote with or against staff's recommendation in addition to offering any additional amendments to the recommendation. All items forwarded from today's meeting will be heard by the Planning and Development Committee in person in the committee room in the north building, which is scheduled for October 6th, 2025 at 5:00 PM. First docket tonight is CZ-2025-061. Property is located at 7 White Horse Road Extension in Greenville. The applicant is Matthew Christian for Leonardo Fernandez of LaFib Contracting Corp. The 2.92 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located at the intersection of Donaldson Road and White Horse Road Extension and currently contains vacant land. This is zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned C2 Commercial District. The request is for S1 Services District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is boat and RV storage. This is subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that successful rezoning to S1 Services District would not be consistent with South Greenville area plan, future land use designation of commercial, which calls for uses typically associated with the C2 Commercial District. Staff also feels the S1 zoning district could allow for uses incompatible with the residential areas to the northeast and south of the subject property. Based on these reasons, staff recommends denial of the requested rezoning to S1 Services District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Backsley. Any questions for staff? Anyone want to speak to the applicant? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval as submitted for staff denial.
All right.
And I'll second whatever he just said.
Mr. Holland made a motion to accept staff's recommendation for denial. I'm going to transpose a little. Ms. Manning has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
All right, 7-1, Mr. Hammond has a no.
The next docket is CZ-2025-062. The property is located on Gunter Road in Piedmont. The applicants are Edward and Sheila Lawless. The 15.06 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.61 miles southeast of the intersection of Gunter Road and Garrison Road and currently contains vacant land. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned RR1 Rural Residential District. The request is for AG Agricultural Preservation District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is leased garden beds. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that successful rezoning to AG Agricultural Preservation District would be consistent with the Plan Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, future land use designation of rural living, as well as the South Greenville area plan, future land use designation of rural preservation. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval with the requested rezoning to AG Agricultural Preservation District. Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions for staff? I got one. This ag tourism is starting to look a whole lot like retail. When they go on and on about, oh, we're going to have bands, we're going to have all sorts of things out there, and there seems to be no control as to what they can do under this category. And they were on the news the other night, like they've already had it approved, and they've said they started grading. Do they have a grading permit?
To my knowledge, they do not have a grading permit.
What does ag tourism say in the ordinance? I mean, is there any definition that's definitive?
There is.
I mean, I like what they're doing, but I just, I'm afraid that... Well, you should know this by heart.
Mr. Chairman, while he's looking.
I've got it, but go ahead.
Got it.
Yes, ma'am, if you want, go ahead.
I was just going to comment that you're absolutely right. I think we do need to enhance the ag...
Tourism thing.
...ag category in general, but I, from what I could tell from the applicants, it looked like they had a really good plan for their site. I mean, I've had people approach us about leasing some of our property for gardens, but you're absolutely right. It could play, these scenarios could play into bigger than what you would think ag would be.
They're going to sell food and drinks.
So, let me read the definition, and then let me go into my spiel about what I've explained to people for agrotourism. So, the definition from the zoning ordinance states, "Agrotourism activities conducted on a working farm, ranch, or other agricultural facility that offer opportunities to the general public or invited groups for education, entertainment, recreation, and/or active involvement in the farm operation." What I've explained to people is that agrotourism, excuse me, the activity that goes on there needs to be tied to the agricultural aspect of the property. If you're growing crops, you're selling the crops that are there. If you have a farm stand or a little shop or something, it's to sell the things that are being produced on the working farm. It's not to sell items that are sold at other retail establishments. Now, if you've got, you know, you've got an actual farm, you've got a farm name and everything, and you want to, you've got some t-shirts and some logos, that kind of stuff can be sold because it's part of that working farm activity. But, and you know, we've gone as far as, you know, putting wineries into this, this category, but you know, the use of the property, selling, you know, growing, renting out beds, having that kind of stuff, then selling that product, that does fall into agrotourism, but there have been times where that has been taken advantage of, in my opinion.
Well, they're talking live entertainment. I just...
I mean, some places, they, you know, they have that. I mean, wineries fall into that category, and they have live entertainment some, but there's been other times where this has come up, and we've, you know, I felt that it did not meet, arise the level of agrotourism.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Ms. Manning.
And I also understand, according to a presentation in front of county council, that this is going to be a members-only. Is that correct?
That's the way it's been explained, is that it's more of a private, members-only kind of thing.
That don't bother me.
Just curious.
Yeah.
All righty, well, I'm sure if you get the complaint, you'll go out there and check it out, so... Any other questions for staff? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All righty, Ms. Phillips made a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
All right, Mr. Matusewick has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no.
No.
Ms. Manning has a no. All right, next docket.
The next docket is CZ-2025-063. Property is located on Chapel Road in Greenville. The applicant is Sheldon Mickens for Azah Temple Number 140. The 1.5 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.05 miles east of the intersection of Chapel Road and Donaldson Road and currently contains vacant land. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. The subject property outlined here is Zoned I1 Industrial District. The request is for C2 Commercial District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is a Shriner's Temple. This is subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that successful rezoning to the C2 Commercial District would not be consistent with the Plan Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, future land use designation of industrial, nor to be consistent with the South Greenville area plan, future land use designation of service and industrial. Based on these reasons, staff recommends denial of the requested rezoning to C2 Commercial District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Backsley. Any questions for staff? Can you put back up the zoning, please? Map? There you go. Goodness gracious.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for staff.
All right.
The, and I believe this might have been mentioned in the public hearing, and I'm not remembering it, what is preventing them from building a Shriner's Temple in this zoning? Was there something about the activity?
So, for similar uses like this, so Shriner's temples, moose lodges, things like this that are more private club-related, we'll typically put that under a private recreation, which is a permitted use in the I-1 district. So, if their intent is just to have a meeting space for their organization, they could do that under the current I-1 zoning. However, if they want to then lease this space out for, say, special events, which is another common aspect of these places, special event facilities as a use are not permitted in the I-1 zoning district, and that would require a rezoning. So, after the applicant turned in an application, we did have that conversation with them, and I've looked back through our old emails to confirm that we sent that information to them as well. So, they were, we asked them, you know, would you like to move forward, or do you want us to withdraw your application and issue a refund? And they asked to move forward. So, our assumption is that they would like to have some sort of event facility aspect to it.
Okay. Ms. Chair, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, is there any other zoning designation besides C2 that would allow them to do that?
There is.
Not liquor.
Josh, if you have the zoning... So, I believe...
I told him, give it away.
I believe the S1 district might also...
Okay.
What about FRD? Staff has an FRD been suggested as well?
It has not. Typically, we don't recommend a review district if we feel what they're trying to do can be established in a standard zoning district. We tend not to.
But once C2, always C2, and they could turn around the next day and sell it to a bar, is the problem, I see.
Is that correct? They could do that?
Oh, yeah.
If the property was rezoned to C2, then any use that is permitted in C2 could go there.
But if it were rezoned to an FRD, that would prevent that, would that not?
It would be limited to whatever uses they've proposed in their statement of intent.
So, that might be a better match, perhaps?
Potentially, or, again, yeah, or the S1 zoning district does allow for special event facilities.
Okay.
So, I mean, that could be a better option at this location.
But the main difference would be the use of alcohol or sale of alcohol, potentially.
Right. Yeah, so, under the C2 district, so, C2 does allow for nightclubs, taverns, and liquor sales, but that's more for, I'd say, dedicated uses to that. You know, I think it's understood that at a special event facility, you know, if you're having a wedding, per se, there's likely going to be a bar at that wedding. We wouldn't necessarily require C2 zoning in that case.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Motion to deny the application.
All righty, thank you, sir.
I'll second it.
Mr. Hammond made a motion to accept staff's recommendation for denial, and, oh crap, Ms. Manning has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right.
The next docket is CZ-2025-064. Property is located at 340 Bagwell Road in Greenville. The applicant is David J. Flores Diaz and Ruby G. Hernandez Aquino. The 1.1 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.25 miles south of the intersection of Roper Mountain Road and Fister Road and currently contains a single-family residence under construction. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned RS Residential Suburban District. The request is for R20 Single Family Residential District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is single-family residential. This is subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that successful rezoning to R20 Single Family Residential District would be consistent with similar land uses in the area and would not have an adverse impact on the surrounding properties. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval with the requested rezoning to R20 Single Family Residential District. Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for staff or a motion?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Parram.
I believe I understood you to say in that, what you just read, that there's already a home being built there. That's, okay, and you can see that. Because when I went out there, I thought it looked like there was something already going on. I just wasn't sure if it was one of the two or two additional, what that was about. So, if it's one additional would be built, then what's already there or under construction now?
Yeah, that is their plan, yes.
And the most that could fit is one additional?
Yes.
For the density. If the R20 was approved, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Mr. Parram has a motion to approve. Ms. Manning has a second. Any further discussion? Would you like to get that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. A no.
The next docket is CZ-2025-065. The property is located at 114 Chalmers Road in Greenville. The applicant is Lynn Solbsby of Blue Water Civil Design LLC for Kenneth Suhandran of DMI Realty Inc. The 3.01 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.3 miles south of the intersection of South Pleasant Park Drive, Highway 291, and Malden Road and currently contains vacant land. This is zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned C2 Commercial District. The request is for FRD Flexible Review District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is automobile storage and club. The applicant is proposing to create a luxury condo, luxury garage condo complex to allow the storage and maintenance of automobiles with a social club component. Uses would include those related to the storage and maintenance of automobiles, as well as other uses as permitted in the C2 Commercial District. There will be up to 26 22-feet-by-50-feet garage condos and 144-foot-by-50-foot clubhouse. Buildings will be pre-engineered metal with colors including gray, white, and blue. Square footage will be limited to 29,700 square feet. Signage and lighting will comply with, will conform with county standards. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that successful rezoning to FRD Flexible Review District as currently presented would not meet the goals of the Plan Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, future land use designation of traditional corridor. This land use type identifies older commercial corridors to be designed primarily for commercial office and retail uses with improved site design and pedestrian-friendly building placement. Staff also feels the request does not meet the intent of the Augusta Road Corridor Strategic Plan, which aims to improve streetscape design and provide beautification in areas along Augusta Road and Interstate 85. The proposed FRD does not establish specific landscape requirements along roadways nor adjacent to existing land uses. Staff also feels the lack of buffer requirements adjacent to the existing extended stay hotel and lack of limitations on operating hours could have an adverse impact. Based on these reasons, staff recommends denial of the requested rezoning to FRD Flexible Review District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Backsley. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few.
Mr. Hammond.
I guess my first question is if this is in C2 now, so of all the uses allowed in C2, would landscaping and pedestrian-friendly be a contingency on a certificate of occupancy?
It would depend on the design of the site as to what landscaping and buffer would be required, but currently for the adjacent properties, you know, the hotel, the office district, either side of this one, no, there would not be buffer requirements.
Okay, so, as I read the staff's conclusion, it seems to be based mostly on landscaping.
That was a large portion of it.
But in C2, there would be no landscaping requirement?
Yeah, but they're asking for FRD.
I realize that, but in a C2 use of which there are dozens, there'd be no landscape requirement or sidewalk requirement?
Again, it would depend on specific site design, if there would be roadside planting required or internal parking lot landscaping required, but adjacent to, along property lines, no, sir.
Okay, well, the recent Chase Bank construction, which is in the last, I guess, 12 to 18 months, what was required for that?
I'm not familiar with that site.
Across the street.
Looks like there's landscaping.
I believe I actually did review that plan, but it's been probably two or three years ago now. Yeah.
Why didn't they submit all the required documents for FRD? That's the point, isn't it?
Were they, I'm sure there was discussion with them stating that this wasn't provided?
Well, so, they did submit the minimum requirements required to move forward with FRD request. You know, it's ultimately up to the applicant within their statement of intent and on their preliminary plan, so ultimately up to them what they want to propose to do. You know, we just iterate to them at the time that, you know, you can propose whatever you want, but you need to consider, you know, what's likely to be approved.
So, it isn't that they didn't submit proper landscape requirements, it's just submitted as an FRD, and the landscape was proposed as proposed.
So, under their current statement of intent, under their landscaping section, they are going to, they are proposing to provide evergreen shrubs around their in-ground trash facility, and then they're also proposing to meet the Greenville County tree ordinance, and that's the extent of what's proposed.
Well, FRD requires drawings, don't they?
It requires a preliminary development plan, which is...
I'm talking about landscape drawing. I didn't see.
Well, typically, if landscaping or buffers are proposed, we do want to see those on the preliminary plan. Yes, sir.
All righty, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Did you have anything else?
Well, I just, the Home Depot was developed 28 years ago, and it's open 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. This is the last lot in that development, backs up to I-85, which has a traffic count of 90,000 cars a day. You can guess whatever the speed limit is on I-85. I suspect it's not the speed limit. And it seems to be one of the concerns here is possible noise incroachment from this development to the extended stay hotel. And I guess I'm a little confused by how, you know, this is a, proposed in the FRD statement of intent is a single-user unit for storage for vintage automobile, high-end automobile, whatever it may be. But in the FRD, the statement of the users does not seem to be that it's going to be noise-oriented toward the hotel, when the hotel backs up to a 90,000-car-a-day interstate highway. And you've got a, and there's a mention here about landscaping on the interstate side. There's a 30-plus-foot drop on the interstate side of this, and there's a High-Tension Duke Energy line separate between this and the interstate. It just, it doesn't seem that noise is really an issue here. This is not anywhere near Augusta Road. It doesn't, Chalmers Road is a road, but it doesn't, it doesn't receive significant traffic. If landscaping is the primary question, I see the applicant here, and I would ask him to come forward and address and see if y'all have any thoughts on adding to, changing, moving landscaping, whatever may be helpful to the group.
Lynn Solbsby, 718 Loudsville Road. We would be happy to augment landscaping. We would be happy to, I think one of your things were hours of operation. We'd be happy to reduce those to something similar to what the hotel was, excuse me, the Home Depot was, and be happy to do those things. That would be easy to do, and we'd be happy to work with staff on that along the way to get that right before the PND meeting.
Could we possibly recommend approval with those conditions?
Sure.
Would that be all right with you, Frank?
Yeah.
I've got one other question before you go too far. That, I think another major issue is that clubhouse adjacent to the hotel. Can you move that on to the other side?
Well, if you're going to restrict the hours, why do you care where it is?
Because I guarantee they're not going to... Yeah, okay.
No, don't say that. If the statement of intent dictates this, they are, you're creating your own zoning in the statement of intent.
I understand.
And you can't blow off what the statement of intent says, because the statement of intent is then enforceable by staff. If they're not open, if they're open past the hours in the statement of intent, it's a violation, correct? So, please don't blow that off.
We would prefer not to move it, because it would probably cause us to lose some units, and that would be undesirable.
You move it where two units are and put two units where it is, but that's okay.
I mean, like I said, we would be open to that.
All right, can I get a motion?
One last, one last thing. I think there is a difference, thank you, there is a difference between the sound of, you know, late, later at night, cars going up and down the road, and somebody working on a 800 horsepower engine and firing it up at 10 o'clock at night. So, that would help me support this more if you did put a condition in there, basically following the same hours as Home Depot.
I think Home Depot is open to 10, if I'm not mistaken.
6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. on Sunday.
And that's coming from a dad whose son at 19 thought he could work on his car at 10 o'clock at night with kids living next door trying to go to sleep, so...
Understood. Yes, sir.
So, is this storage, or will the, so the owners of the vehicles can come in at any time, just like a typical storage building?
Yes, ma'am. That is my understanding, is it's, it's, there's other things that can be done there, but their primary users, when they sell the condominium units, are people with either classic cars or sports cars. cars or sports cars or fancy stuff. I don't know how much work they do on them or how much they go over there and just wax them and look at them. I mean, that, that I can't speak to.
Guys aren't odd like that.
I, I'm not a car guy, so I don't quite understand this, uh, but, but I mean, that's the idea. It is, it's gonna be unusual cars. They're not gonna take my truck and park it in there because everybody would laugh at me if I drove up in that.
So when you say that there are other things that can be done there, such as, what are the other things?
I think, see, anything in C2 we left in there is an allowable use, which most of them wouldn't really work very well with this building. Uh, but I think, uh, if I recall correctly, they haven't had much of this, but I think one guy put like a, a golf simulator or something in there and, and, and said, hey, invited three of his friends over and they played a round of golf or whatever on the simulator kind of thing. Stuff like that could be done, but it's primarily, from what my client has told me, it is primarily cars.
So, is the golf simulator scenario not allowed in C2?
It would be.
Well, why are we asking for a change to FRD?
So, the FRD, they have kept all the uses that would be allowed in C2. The one components that's been added now is these, uh, these condoed out automobile storage garages essentially. Uh, that's the one use that's been allowed here. They could have potentially tried to rezone to say, uh, S1 or I1 to allow the automobile storage component. Um, but based on the zoning of this area and the location, um, I believe they felt what FRD was probably, uh...
Staff recommended we go for FRD, felt like it was more appropriate because S1 has, there's a litany of things that would be pretty undesirable in this location. Even, you know, it's back to, I think one of y'all said, if you zone at that, doesn't matter what they say they're gonna do, it can be sold to be anything that's allowed in that zone. The FRD has the beauty of controlling exactly what we can do.
We understand that. Do they still have the cell and consumption of alcohol in their statement of intent?
Uh, it's an allowed use under C2, so.
Yeah, well, but it's changed into FRD, so I mean...
Right, so in the, in the statement of intent for their FRD, they do state that all uses as allowed in C2 would still be allowed.
Okay, thank you, I didn't see that. Ms. Manning?
Will there be auto repair also allowed? And what, what type of auto repair? Just kinda curious.
You know, my vision of it, what I was thinking is, sure, probably somebody's gonna change their oil there.
Sure.
They're gonna change a tire, they're gonna change a battery, they're gonna change a alternator or something like that. I, I would imagine those things would be done. I, I don't envision, and I, I'm not quite sure how the statement of intent looks at, I wouldn't expect somebody would do a complete tear down to the frame and try, and pull a motor and do all that kind of stuff. I don't think structurally the building's set up for that type of work to like lift a motor out in that level of work. It's not intended to be like an automotive garage where you'd take your car to somebody for a litany of repairs.
But the, the change in zoning would though allow it if, if in fact someone wanted to put auto repair in there, would it not?
Well, the, the FRD states...
Would it not? I'd like to ask staff about that, Mr. Hammond.
Well, it's in the statement of intent. It says no commercial repairs or services allowed, minor repairs and services.
I just wanna hear it from staff, thank you, Mr. Hammond.
It's in the statement of intent.
Thank you.
So, correct, yep. So, uh, under their permitted use category, service garage for minor repairs and services of personal vehicles with no, uh, no commercial repairs or services allowed. Uh, minor repairs and services are to take place inside the units and should not be visible from neighboring properties.
Very good, I wanted to make sure it was in part of the minutes. Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
If, if one of the owners or members, they decided they wanted to put a lift in that wasn't ma, it was just mounted to the floor, that they could do all these repairs themselves, that would also still be allowed under this current rezoning. So it wouldn't have to be a commercial repair, it could just be myself and I invite Mr. Manisiewicz over to help me, cause he's a car guy, but we're not commercially rated to do that, but we know how to do it. So that would be allowed?
As I understand it, uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff of the applicant's representative? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, we recommend approval with the conditions that they revise the statement of intent to include landscaping in the buffers and hours of operation.
Restriction.
Yes.
Yeah. Alrighty, Ms. Phillips made a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, with that motion, we would need more specific criteria as far as what those hours of operation are.
Oh, I'm getting there.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
Again, I'm going to try them. Now, I lost my train of thought.
I'm sorry.
Uh, Ms. Phillips made a motion to approve with the conditions of additional landscaping in the buffers as required.
And road frontage.
And road frontage, along with, uh, restricting the hours to the hours that Home Depot currently has, which Mr. Hammond may or may not be right, I don't know, have you been to that?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure he's right, they have very...
Yeah, I looked that on the website this morning.
Okay.
They're probably open to what, 10?
And what were those hours? Hold on.
Six AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Sunday. Those are their current hours.
Did you get that, Josh?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright. Ms. Franklin, I know, I was thinking of something, I'm sorry. I don't wanna repeat all that again. Ms. Phillips made a motion to approve with all these conditions and Ms. Franklin has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. No. Alright, 7-1.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one question on that motion? That was for, that was seven days, right? That wasn't, that was for all, every day, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, except Sunday was...
Sundays are different hours.
No.
Saturdays and Sundays, Monday through Saturday, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sundays, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Eight AM to 8:00 PM on Sunday only.
Okay. Everything else is 6 to 10.
Yes. Alright, time to flip-flop. They're stating any time.
Thank you. This is PP 2025, 143 Choice Park. Choice Park is a proposed conservation subdivision located east of Scuffleton Road, which is a state road. The applicant is requesting 73 lots on 62 acres for a density of 1.18 units per acre. Access is provided off of Scuffleton Road and Jonesville Road. Here's the site, shown in red. And here is Scuffleton Road looking north and looking south. Here's Jonesville Road looking east and looking west. Here is the site plan that was submitted in your packets. The project includes two ingress egress points, five internal roads, one cluster mailbox area with shared parking, with the proposed covered pavilion amenity, 50-foot screening buffers around the perimeter of the site, 150-foot scenic roadside buffers along existing rights of way, appropriate riparian and wetland buffers, three detention ponds, 5,108 linear feet of new public road, one stubout for interconnectivity, and 33.62 acres of open space, 31 acres are required. Here is the zoning of the site. You can also see that the site is within the Scuffleton Rural Conservation District overlay, as well as within the Scuffleton Area Plan where it is designated as both rural residential and neighborhood center. Rural residential areas, um, the intent of this classification is to provide for low-density, large-lot, single-family residential development, as well as agricultural and forestry-related land uses. These areas are generally rural agricultural in character. This classification has a recommended density of one to two dwelling units per acre. As a reminder, Choice Park is requesting a density of 1.18 dwelling units per acre. The site is additionally within the neighborhood center area of the Scuffleton Area Plan, which is a mix of limited office and residential uses that serve the surrounding area. The subject site is also a part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan where it is designated as suburban neighborhood. Um, new, suburban neighborhoods are generally shaped by residential subdivisions of medium lot homes with relatively uniform housing types and densities. The ca, this character area type recommends a density of three to five dwelling units per acre. Choice Park is requesting a density of 1.18 dwelling units per acre. Here is an image of the site and across the street from the site. And here is an image across Scuffleton Road from the site. SAC comments that were provided at the SAC meeting this past month are as follows. From E911, road names are to be applied for before final plat. Please state if new roads are private. This comment was addressed at the Reesamiddle. From Roads and Bridges, right-of-way to be extended to property line with a minimum seven foot of pavement. This comment was also addressed at the Reesamiddle. And from Clear Springs Fire Department, the cul-de-sac needs to be extended to a minimum of 45 feet to curb due to CSFR apparatus size and turn radius. This comment was additionally addressed at the Reesamiddle. Staff recommendation is approval with conditions, and I will point out that this is different from what was in your packets. I was provided with some additional information since the packet had gone out, so I have updated my conditions here. You can see them before you on the screen, um, so they are as follows. One, please provide a revised preliminary plan by October 3rd, 2025, showing the following. One, reconfiguration of the lots to remove the existing structures from the disturbed area. Structures on the site should be preserved rather than demolished due to their potential historic nature and located with, in location within the Scuffleton Rural Conservation District. Two, topographical contour intervals at no greater than four feet. Three, clarify labels of all hatching types on plan. Number two, staff recommends protecting and preserving the potential existing historic structures on site due to their contribution to the Scuffleton Rural Conservation District and the outlined intent of this district. Mr. Chairman?
Alrighty, we have no one who's signed up in opposition and we're gonna start with Mr. Harrison in favor. You got 10 minutes.
Collectively, right?
Now, just 10 minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is Paul Harrison, 718 Lounce Hill Road, Greenville, South Carolina. Um, just, just to kinda touch on a couple of things, um, we all know is, this, this property's within the Scuffleton Rural Overlay District. I do wanna say, point out, just to emphasize that the underlying zoning RS would allow 1.7 units per acre and we're proposing 1.18 units per acre. I think this plan, um, is a good plan, we stand behind it. 73, uh, single-family detached lots. It, it pretty much, uh, is less than what the Greenville County Comp Plan allows and calls for. Um, and it, and it also, um, it ju, it just meets every aspect of the, um, the Scuffleton Rural Conservation Plan. Uh, the buffers, 150-foot buffer along Jonesville Road, 150-foot buffer along Scuffleton Road. Um, and, uh, we, you know, we plan on providing landscaping and stuff to buffer, to plant those buffers and, and to provide privacy from both of those roadways. Um, we have public water and sewer, um, we've got all the letters in hand. Um, we did get a comment from D, uh, DOT that a TIS would be required and we plan on doing that. Uh, Jonesville Road, um, is actually, that portion of Jonesville Road is actually maintained by Greenville County, um, but our frontage along Scuffleton is maintained by SC DOT. I do want to kinda quickly touch on Megan's, kinda just came up at the last minute about the specific comments about the, uh, historical, uh, buildings, features on site. Currently, there's a, uh, Mr. Knight and his family, their current house, which they live in on the property, and then there's two exterior barns on the property as well. Um, I did a little research myself just today, cause I just found out about this today. Um, and Mr. Knight, he's, he's gonna come up after me and I think he might be able to talk about it a little more. I, can I hand these exhibits out to the planning commission so they can kinda see exactly where these fall?
Sure.
Yeah, I think it might, it might be hard to see. I've got my own, you got your...
You didn't wait for me to answer you, though. That's okay, I'm used to it. Mr. Holland won't raise his hand, did he?
Well, we said I should tackle you next time.
You didn't raise your hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so these are the three existing structures and I understand they're probably a little bit, uh, they're hard to see, but the main, the main house itself does not fall with any proposed lots that we're proposing within the development. Lot number 57 is the closest lot and, um, the house is kinda split or bisected by the, the 150-foot buffer that runs along Jonesville Road, so, um, I, uh, just based on the research that we've done and based on, it's, it's not on any kind of national historic registry, this house or any of these features. It was identified and I think the reason, the best I could understand is the reason it was identified to start with is because the house itself and maybe the barns on site are older than 75 years old. So, my understanding, just in reading the, the documentation is, if anything, any feature on a property building, accessory structure on the property is older than 75 years old, it gets automatically flagged as being a potential historical feature, so, um, we're, we're not, we're willing to work with the agencies or groups, um, to identify and, and kinda understand the nature of, of the historical value of these houses and barns and we're willing to work with them, but as of right now, I would, I wanna see this application be acted upon. I don't think it affects, the house itself does not affect any of the proposed lots that we're showing, but we're more than willing to work with Greenville County, with staff, with the historic, uh, groups to understand this a little more. I mean, it just kinda came up at the, today, I talked to staff about it, so, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Knight, let him come up and speak a little more, he may be able to touch on that, and then I'll stick around and we'll be glad to answer any questions that, uh, that planning commission has.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question.
Sure, Mr. Hammond.
If, if these are designated worthy to be, say, maintained, who, who maintains?
That could be a lot of different options.
Yeah, there are different options for that.
If we witness, they're like, it becomes full responsibility of each of them.
Just, just curious, I mean, if, if they...
If it's on the national registry, there's no, there's no local maintenance, um, required from, from local ordinances. It's just the national registry, registry provides the opportunity to receive tax credits. Uh, if followed, if, if certain criteria is followed for any type of, uh, re, you know, renovation or anything, excuse me, anything like that, you could receive tax credits for, uh, in that regard. A, a local registry is where you would have regulations that say you can't do this, you can't do that. So that's, but, and I, I do wanna point out one thing that Megan mentioned as far as the zoning, zoning ordinance goes for the Scuffleton, it does say one of the intents is to preserve and maintain historic and archaeological sites and structures that serve as significant reminders of the county's cultural and architectural history. Uh, that's one of the intents of the Scuffleton District. Thank you.
Mr. Knight, name and address, please, sir.
Phil Knight, 556 McKinney Road, Simpsonville.
Okay.
Um, I've got a few...
Um, I've got a few comments to make, but let me sort of address the elephant in the room about the historic site. Um, that, that house would not survive as a historic site. We have been repairing it and repairing it and repairing it for years and years and years. Uh, even if you built around it twenty years from now, it would just be crumbled into the dust. It's, it's old, old. It's nineteen-twenty, and there's nothing left there. It's been, uh, the inside has been completely changed over the years. There's nothing original about it. Uh, we've been, you know, contemplating just tearing it down for a long time. Right now, I don't live there, but there is a, a renter that lives on that property. But, um, once he moves out, we have no intention for that property to remain standing. In fact, it would not be a good idea for it to remain standing. So, just say that. The only thing that was probably historic about that intersection was the property across the street on the, uh, south side of that intersection and belonged to my aunt. It was built back in eighteen-eighty, but, uh, it was a very historic piece of land there. But that house has long since disintegrated into the dust, and a new house has been erected on that spot. So, the property that we're considering today has been in our family for almost a hundred years. So, the decision to develop it was only made after extensive discussions by our family members. We live in this community. We will continue to be neighbors. And we want a development plan that will honor our family's legacy and also be considerate of our neighbors. Our initial plan involved neighborhood services along with a residential portion. And even though it wasn't required, we held an informal meeting back in April to invite public input from the community. Over one hundred members of the community attended that meeting. And based on that feedback, we concluded that a purely residential community would be the highest and best use of the property. Because the location falls within the Scuffletown Conservation District, it already has stricter requirements than other parts of the county, including the hundred-and-fifty-foot buffers and the fifty percent overall green space. We chose to take these restrictions even a step further by specifying average lot sizes that are twice the minimum requirement, as well as upscale design features that will ensure that this is a high-quality, high-end community. These help, these steps will also help to address concerns over traffic and population growth. Moreover, we named this development Choice Park in honor of our Aunt Choice Ballinger, who lived directly across from this property for sixty-eight years. She was well-known and loved in the community, and we want this to be a legacy that would honor Choice and the generations that came before us. We wish to be careful stewards of this property, and so we appreciate your consideration.
Any questions for the owner? Alright, how much time we got?
A minute eighteen.
Anybody else on this list would like to speak?
Minute eighteen.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Chad Carson at thirty, Pate Wood Drive. I'm just speaking on behalf of the applicant, uh, DRB Homes. Um, as an applicant slash developer, just wanna kind of, uh, paint a picture that we're not just some out-of-town developer that doesn't know this area. I live half a mile from here. Uh, I go to the gem that's right up Scuffletown Road. So, I, I, and we, as, as, you know, DRB Homes are intimately knowledgeable of this area, know how sensitive it can be. Um, but just want to, um, kinda speak on behalf of, of, of the developer. We've worked hand-in-hand with Mr. Knight and Mr. Harrison and hope to put a good product in front of you. Thanks so much.
Any questions for the developer? You're good. Thank you, sir. Anybody else wanna speak real quick? Mr. Harrison, I got some questions for you. I'm gonna start. I usually don't. How come you typically show these existing buildings to be demoed on these preliminary flats, don't you?
Yes, sir.
How come you didn't hear?
I think they are shown on, on one of the first, uh, one of the existing condition plan.
Oh, well.
So, they just don't.
I didn't bring that one. I'm sorry.
I got, I got a big copy of it if you would like.
No, I believe you. I'm just curious.
EC one eight.
Oh, oh, well. The hatching up at the top, that's not in the legend, what are those dashed lines?
That's just, uh, the, 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 one of the hatches is the floodplain line, the darker dash line that you see.
Yeah, that one.
Is the floodplain line.
Alright.
And then the other hatching is just showing the repairing buffers.
Okay. Well, no, I'm talking between the thick dash line and the repairing.
That's, that's the floodplain.
Floodplain, okay. Alrighty. Any other questions for the engineer?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. Maybe the, the landowner can speak to it. But the, you mentioned that the one building is in bad repair. Are the other two buildings likewise in bad repair?
No.
Just wanted to clarify, 'cause sometimes people, you know, add buildings later, and maybe it's in better shape, so.
Ms. Phillips is chomping at the bit to answer that question, too.
I have, I have never walked up to the home or walked in it, and so I can't state for certain. But it is, it, it seems from the roadway, and I live in this area, a very, well, I mean, I'm sure it's costly. Old homes are costly. We have an old home. Um, and the fact that there are renters in the home would make me think it's livable. Um, so, I, the barns might be, mm, might not be rendered, um, useful. But I, I would say, just from a visual perspective, that it's not falling in at all. Um, it's very, I think it's very unique. Uh, I did have a question, though, about this being so close to Bell's Crossing and a possible crosswalk connection. Is that that stubout connection you've got?
We do the, the, uh, uh, I think that was a comment at SAC from, maybe from Skip, and the school district was to provide a, a connection back out to the intersection. But there's no current crosswalk or anything there.
No, there's not.
But I, I mean, I think that's a good thing. Uh, and maybe at some point in time, there will be some improvements there at that intersection, and there'll be a, a pathway for students to walk directly over to Bell's Crossing.
Well, it is a lighted, and, I mean, it's, it's a signaled intersection. So, I would think, yeah. I don't know how that works.
Are you saying would be, would we be willing?
No, I, I, I wouldn't even go that route, because I think that's a complicated game. But I, I don't, I don't know how that process works.
I mean, really and truthfully, you'd really need sidewalks that would go all the way down through the school. I mean, um, I, I think one day we'll get there. Um, and I think a sidewalk connection from our neighborhood back out is a, is a good thing to go ahead and plan for. So, we, we, we were more than happy to provide that.
Any other questions? I would be derelict if I didn't read the following. In Article sixteen, sixteen point one point three, letter B, "The planning commission shall determine the appropriateness of the dimensions of the required open space. The open space on the preliminary flat should have meaningful dimensions, proportions, and placement."
It, did, does that apply? I would like to ask staff that. This is not, I don't wanna get the Scuffletown open space requirements confused with cluster developments.
So, the section he referenced is section sixteen, which is the Scuffletown-specific section in the LDR.
Okay. And what open space, what open space within this community is not meaningful to what I think every single lot that we're showing on the plan?
Again, your interpretation of mine is always different. You've, you've done a lot better in the past. It's just not a lot of room for playgrounds or recreation and those kinda things.
So, uh, a hundred-and-fifty-foot buffers along Jonesville Road and Scuffletown Road, the big, meaningful open space right in the heart of the subdivision, right as you drive in, and then all the open space throughout behind the houses and stuff.
You've heard me talk about those strips before.
But those, these strips are a lot bigger than, this is, that, that green area, hatched area you show around this, or we're showing around this site, that's a fifty-foot.
Undisturbed buffer?
Undisturbed buffer, and then there's, there's, there's open space, there's open space beyond that. But undisturbed means undisturbed. You can't go cut it down. It doesn't mean that the community can't go in that buffer and use that.
Oh, then go walk. You're right.
Yeah, and that's, that's meaningful, very meaningful to, to me, for a, a potential resident.
Like I said, we always differ on this, but it is part of this Article sixteen Scuffletown. And I just think you've done better before. Any other questions for Mr. Harrison?
I have a comment. I was quite surprised to see the lot reduction compared to what could've been there. And impressed, you know, considering what we saw a few months ago, so.
Thank you.
Well, the one a few months ago had less lots than this.
Wow, it did have less lots, no doubt.
Well, those lot sizes RS on that original diagram? Uh, no, I'm talking about, you hadn't seen this thing. It was what?
Somebody submitted a?
No, it wasn't submitted.
No, it was, uh, presented to the area residents, like he spoke of earlier.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and I just happened to get a copy of it.
Well, I'll say this. I'll end on this. If the community didn't want this subdivision in their backyard, then I would think they would be here tonight.
I would've thought so, too.
And they don't ever have a problem showing up in the past, because I come to just about every single meeting. So, I'm gonna chalk this one up, and I'm gonna make sure I keep record of this one, because no opposition showed up at a, a subdivision application that we submitted. So, I think, I think that speaks volume for what the community feels about the, the plan for the property.
Don't disagree. I just, we, we get other phone calls and texts and emails and such, so.
Any more questions?
Any more questions? You can sit down.
Uh, uh, let me clarify something, Paul. The, the, the structures that are requesting to be left on the property. Make sure I understand that, that those structures, if they're, if they're remain, don't affect your site plan.
Well, the house doesn't.
The house, the house, the barns will.
The barns are, the barns are technically fall within lots, so they are, they're, um, I think Ms. Janelle can speak on behalf of those, 'cause she's seen them. Um, the house, what, what I would suggest is that we have a chance to work with staff, to work with our client and the historic group. Um, and let's not vote on tonight whether or not they have to stay or they're gonna be removed of it, that we can work with them and we can figure out if they, if there are any historic value.
Sorry, you're proposing we hold this?
Not hold it. I, I would like to, I would like to, it doesn't, the house itself doesn't affect the, the, uh, site plan that's presented before you. And if it had to stay as is, it doesn't fall within any of the lots. It falls within common area.
Would it affect the buffer required by Scuffletown?
It, it, the buffer bisects the house.
Yeah.
I mean, but.
So, without knowing that, should we be?
I don't know. Megan, does that affect the, the buffer, having a house in it?
Wow.
Uh, depends on the terms of the buffer. I'd have to check the, the ordinance.
Fifty, I don't think it's within the hundred-and-fifty-foot.
The screening, the screening is within the first fifty feet of the buffer.
Right, you're not planting back in that area. 'Cause it's, it's meant to feel rural still, and so planting all those trees in a hundred-and-fifty-foot would, number one, be onerous. But number two.
Especially after a hurricane.
Right.
Can I, can I ask Mr. Harrison a question?
Where's your hand?
Alright.
Mr. Al.
So, Paul, what makes these, uh, units historical? The house and the two barns?
I think the age of them.
Okay, but.
I, I think they get identified, there's no, there's, Mr. Knight, there's nothing, there's nothing, th- first of all, this house or, or these barns are not on any national historic registry.
Okay.
My interpretation, the way I read the documents that I had access to online, was if there is a structure on a property that is a certain age, it gets pegged or deemed as potential historic, uh, a, a potential historic structure. The owner of the house or, or the, the buildings would have to, if he wanted to get it on a historic registry, he would have to request that information, and they would have to go through the process.
Correct.
That, to my knowledge, has never been done.
Okay.
Suzanne.
Mr. Chairman, Suzanne from our office is here.
Okay.
Help maybe answer some of that question from a, from a planning standpoint. She handles the historic preservation side.
That'd be great. Apparently, we're stumbling.
So, the county, um, had a survey done in twenty-thirteen. It's called the Brockington Survey, and it shows, um, historical, um, sites within the county. Um, this one was, um, given a site number. It wasn't evaluated to be, whether or not it was eligible for the, um, National Register, but the fact that it's on there, um, tells us that it, if it was evaluated, it probably would be. It's a very nice example of a nineteen-twenty's craftsman home. And it looks like it's in fairly decent condition to, to me. You can see on the pictures, it doesn't look like it's falling down.
But the homeowner has stated that it is falling down.
That's fine. I'm just looking at a picture. Um, the other thing is that our land development regulations say that it's not technically a historic property unless it is on the National Register. But the Scuffletown plan has said that one of the purposes is to preserve historic features.
Right.
Um, so it's subjective whether or not this is a historic feature. It's a subjective decision. But if, with all likelihood, just the exterior of it, even if it's not in good shape, it is still a good representation of a nineteen-twenty's craftsman home, and the age works, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, I have a quick question before she leaves. Excuse me, sir. So, what would be the next steps? 'Cause if, go back to your conditions that you had earlier, or the, the extra pieces that you added in, yeah. So, what would be the next steps, I mean, to figure this out?
That's really, it's really up to you whether you, um, Megan had a suggestion to try and see whether we could work on keeping it there. And there's another possibility of possibly moving it, if it's, if it's able to be moved. Um, and that would, you know, if somebody was interested in doing that. But, um, oh, the other thing I wanted to say was that, you know, even though the, the Scuffletown Rural Conservation District gives that as a goal, it doesn't list any steps within that ordinance, what you should do if, if you have a historic feature. So, that's why we're kind of in this.
It's a big nebulous idea without any real process around it. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Mr. Knight, I will allow you to speak briefly.
So, I think the point was made, even if you designate this as a stor- could you put that picture back up, please? Even if you designate this as a historic site, it'll crumble into the ground within twenty years. The, the structure to the right-hand side of that house was taken out by Hurricane Helene, doesn't exist anymore, along with additional damage to the, to the house. Keep it if you want it, but, uh, who's gonna maintain it? And, and, and where's that money gonna come from? And, I mean, I know how the house is constructed. I've been coming to it for sixty-eight years of my life. You know, it's, we've had to replace floor joists, and it's sitting on old concrete piers underneath. The, the bones of the house are terrible. And, and, you know, we've just tried to keep it going for all these years, but we never intended that, uh, it stand us in a- it stand as an historic landmark in the neighborhood. It really wasn't. Like I say, the landmark was the house it was across the street that, that no longer exists.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So I, what's that?
Mr. Knight?
Mr. Knight, I just want to be clear. On that picture to the right, where the white column in the tan colored building, are you saying?
That no longer exists.
It's no longer there? Okay, thank you.
It was completely destroyed by the hurricane.
Thank you.
Now, there are, there are huge oak trees on that piece of property, and they should be preserved where they can be, and that would be fall primarily within the hundred and fifty-foot buffer. So that, that part of the rural nature should, should remain intact.
There's a difference with the roots like this.
All right, any other questions?
I, I, I do have, I'm curious, and this may be,
Mr. Hammond?
Our historical correspondent from the county, I'm sorry, didn't ask while you were up there. If, if, if we weren't sitting here tonight and there weren't a subdivision plan on this property, and the homeowner, the landowner determined the home was just a danger, a liability, could they just demo it?
Yes.
So, so the landowner could demo the house this afternoon?
Yes.
Okay. Well,
You gotta.
They won't demo with a renter in it.
Depends on.
So, so there's, so there's nothing preventing the, the landowner from demoing the, the structures on the property?
That's right.
Gotta get a permit. All righty, Commissioners, any other questions?
I'll, do you mind if I make a statement? I don't want to create a situation where it sounds like we wanna make the developer or, or the property owners responsible for preserving this piece. Um, just understand that, you know, as, as growth has occurred, especially in the Five Fork Scuffle Town area, things have gotten torn down, ravaged, the history's almost not there anymore. And it's that way all over the county. So when we identify these things, especially since that's a priority in the Scuffle Town area plan and Conservation District, if we can work to do something to keep some of that history there, I think that's important. And there, there are lots of groups that, you know, could be willing to take that on. I don't think that's a problem, but I don't want to create an environment where if we approve this, you all say, well, let's get rid of this. We don't have to do anything with it later. Um, I'd like to give an opportunity for some sort of looking into it to see if there's a feasible plan.
That's gonna be tough. Mr. Holland?
Um, would you like to?
Within it?
Yes, so I, I, I agree with what you're saying, but there's no one here in opposition.
No, there's not.
And he had a meeting in April, and he said a hundred people showed up.
Yes.
And if they don't have a problem with it and it's their neighbor.
I, I'm surprised we haven't, didn't have people attend, and we didn't have people email.
I am too.
Because I do know there were people that weren't happy with it. They're happier with this than they were with the prior. Um, so yes, one would believe that's the case, but it's also our responsibility to look at these things and,
I don't, I don't.
And keep, it helps, helps save the character of our communities.
I don't disagree. My question about what makes this historical, I'd hate to see this destroyed and we find out down the road that, oh, somebody spent the night there that was extremely important a hundred years ago.
Oh, well, maybe they not. Maybe the Knights have some famous person in there.
Right, so.
Yeah.
Y'all about done? I understand your concern, and it's a valid concern, but it's just very difficult. I agree with Mr. Hammond. If, if it could be demoed tomorrow with a permit, that, I mean, I just, and I agree with Mr. Harrison. There's nobody here to complain, even though I think it's terrible open space. But that's just me. Um, I don't know, Ms. Phillips. It's gonna be difficult to put any sort of conditions on here.
Well, being staff made those recommendations, I think we're pretty safe if we recommend approval with staff's conditions.
Well, I think staff was listening.
Conditions are to leave the structure on the site.
No, if you, put them back, put them back up. Thank you. Yeah, you're right.
Uh, so if, if the structures are left, then who becomes responsible for those structures when this neighborhood is built out? And let's say they survive until the neighborhood's built out two years from now.
I think most of the time what happens is they, they, these houses get carved out on a small piece of property and they get donated to some historical society or whatever.
Right.
And I think, I think that's what happens, but if I start go carving out property and land,
Right.
I lose acreage, buffers change, just it, it, I promise, you know, and Chad can get up here and speak on behalf of this. If, if this plan's approved tonight, there's nothing happening on the property for, call it eight months. You know, there's a, there's a long process to go. I, I don't know if this can be put in there, but you have my word, and I'm sure Chad would share my same beliefs, that we will work with staff to work with some groups and see about if they're willing to relocate the house to a different location, if, if someone wants to preserve the house.
Right.
Well, it looks like there's only one lot, Lot fifty-seven, that would really be affected.
Not with the barns.
But you started.
It's the barns in the back.
The barns.
Could we make a motion to approve with the condition that the applicant does their due diligence in working towards trying to preserve those structures in some form or fashion, and, and not stating they have to stay on the site?
I like what staff, staff recommends. Staff's not dictating, so I believe we could be safe by sticking with these staff's recommendations.
Item two and three, and item two. Take the one out of the first condition. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because I like number two better.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just don't see how.
Yeah.
It proceeds leaving one under condition one in place.
Yeah, take that out and put two in.
If you could take, leave two and three in under, under big one.
Yeah.
And if it's appropriate, as per Paul's comment, that the developer, the applicant, the home, the landowner make all good faith efforts to cooperate with county, nonprofits, et cetera, in the, in, in some type of preservation of the, of the, the structures. If, if it's feasible at some point, if they can be, they can be moved. Uh, I find it hard to believe somebody's gonna move these things. Moving something is extremely expensive. Um, and kind of to John's comment, i- if, just because these are old doesn't make them of, of, of relevant nature. Just they're old.
Right.
Um, and I, I gotta feel like buy down. As much in the spotlight as any subdivision application is in our county, especially with the, the Scuffle Town overlay, if there was something truly historic about these structures, it would have come up. And if y'all uncover something in, you know, the next eight months, Paul.
Confederate gold or something.
Yeah, Confederate gold, or Rick, and Rick Flair's grandfather was born there. I don't know.
Be sure to share it up here, okay?
Yeah, I, 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 that's not gonna be something you're gonna be able to hide and not, something's probably gonna be in the best interest of the developer to, to go and tear them down. Uh, but to, to try to table this or to put some kind of black and white, um, opinion, I just don't think we can do. Um, and I, I, I would make a motion, we approve the staff recommendation with the conditions, omit little one of the, the larger one, leave two and three in and big two in, and with an additional comment that, that all parties involved make all good faith efforts to, um, to investigate how to best maintain the, the historical relevance of these structures.
Ms. Phillips, would you rescind your motion?
Yes, I'll rescind my motion.
Okay. Mr. Hammond, you're making that motion?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will second Frank's motion.
All righty. Mr. Hammond made a motion to approve, along with staff's recommendation, except for number one and, uh, subsection number one.
Subsection.
And we'll keep two and three and under one, and we'll keep section number two.
Right.
All right. Still don't like the open space. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Ms. Manning says no. And I should have said no. I accidentally said aye, to be honest with you.
Are you an aye or no, Mr. Chairman?
I'm an aye. I accidentally said it.
We'll discuss that Monday on our Robert's Rules.
Yes, we will. No, I had to stick with it. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is VA twenty twenty-five, one forty-four. Um, Hartness Village Center LDR variance from eight point fourteen point one, site triangles variance. The applicant is requesting a variance from the requirements of LDR eight point fourteen point one, which requires the property lines at all intersections have a twenty-five-foot setback from the point of intersection to the point of tangent. According to the applicant, the standard twenty-five-foot setback site triangles will be reduced at the intersection of Road A and Society Street due to the buildings planned in those lot areas that would impede site triangles. The applicant also states that appropriate visibility will be provided, given the slow speeds and mixed residential commercial nature of the development. Here is the site outlined in red, and here is a detail showing the area of site triangle, um, shown in red as well. Here is an image of the site. SAC comments provided at the meeting. Provide fire department letter for all three variance requests. You'll see the other three, um, other two variance requests um, here in a moment. Email correspondence from fire marshal, um, was included in the packet. Um, so you'll see that that letter was provided. Um, staff recommends approval of the variance as requested. Mr. Chairman?
All righty. Well, Mr. Greer, there were three other pieces of paper up there that you were supposed to sign up on. But yet you choose to sign up on this subdivision. Nobody in opposition?
It's been a long week.
Yeah, I know the feeling. All right, start speaking to this first one.
Yes, sir. This is Charles Greer, three sixty-six, University of Vin Circle. Um, this went back with the approved, uh, packet last month in Planning Commission for the Hartness Village Center. Um, these three were asked, and we coordinated with Russell and Kurt at the county, Russell at the Fire Department, Kurt at the county, on all three of these, and they were both on board. With the nature of hardness and how it is all very slow, in this specific example, there's, it's almost like a commercial site where it's almost commercial roads and parking lots to where, you know, you're not going more than fifteen miles per hour, so. That's, the next two, you'll see there's radius reductions in the alleys, and then this first one is a, is a site plan. Could you go back to the site triangle? There you go. So, the, the county requires the kind of chamfer on the corner of properties when you have an intersection. In this case, the actual site distance is further up off the corner of the property to where they're looking, if you can see the, the red triangle, so there's really no obstruction, and the building's not gonna be sitting on the actual corner of that. It'll be further back, so. This is more just a formality of.
Why wasn't this caught during preliminary review?
Exactly.
It was, I think it was missed in the packet, or I'm not sure which, which side it was missed on. I think, I believe we sent it, but I think it got missed on the presentation.
I'm not aware of it being within any packet previously, no.
Well, then it got missed on our end on the packet. Now it's being included after the fact.
Yeah, I believe it was in the final development plan, so, and that was approved that way.
Yeah.
Um, and then I think there was discussions with our Roads and Bridges Department, but I was not included in those discussions, so. When we found out that that had gone, gone that way, we were, we determined that they needed to get the variance requests approved to match the preliminary plan, because the preliminary plan actually shows what you see here as being requested. That's already been approved.
So.
Yeah, what?
Basically, so you approved a preliminary plan a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Um, and it shows what is here. However, when you go to do the technical design, it's not meeting the ordinance, and there's no variance request for it. So.
But we approved it.
You didn't approve a variance request for it.
And he's coming back for a variance request. Why?
Yeah.
It's really, it's really just a formality. We have to go do this to legally show that we got the variance approved.
What is this gonna affect? Is it gonna?
Nothing.
There's no building change or, hold on.
The, the building's further back. It's not gonna.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're, we're really just coming to true up a, a miss on the formality of the process.
Mr. Parham?
So what hardship is in place? What hardship does the developer incur if we don't approve this?
So if you don't approve this, that the site triangle would have to be chamfered on the darker property line above the red, and it would kick the building setbacks back into where the building needs to be, so. This is just showing that, hey, our site distance is outside of where it would need to be.
So you'd have to move the building.
The building would probably shrink and not work because the setbacks would get kinked.
And y'all have a big staff that goes over these and works on them, or you hire someone to do this, right?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
I, variances in the LDR, whenever in the opinion of the Planning Commission, the strict application of the requirements contained in these regulations would result in substantial or excessive difficulties, hardships, or injustices, the Planning Commission may modify such requirements. Making a building a little smaller just doesn't seem to be a biggie.
I would agree.
Well, the, the real reason for it is, is the technicality of the site distance is not affecting the roadway. So the site triangle per code would push the building further back than needed to actually require clear site distance. This is just showing that we still meet the site distance even without the chamfer of the property corner.
I'm confused now.
But you just said you'd have to make the, move the building or make it smaller.
Yeah.
All right.
But the, the reason that we're here for the site triangle thing is to show that even if the building was maximally what it could be, it still wouldn't block site distance.
All right.
But it's outside the.
This is just number one of three variances.
Yeah, this one, this one I'm okay with.
Do we wanna proceed with the other two and then?
No, I'd like to take each one.
Okay.
That's how it shows the.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion, please?
Sure.
To approve the variance.
Mr. Hammond made a motion to approve variance one forty-four. Ms. Franklin has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Mr. Parham has a no. One fifty-one.
Twenty twenty-five, one fifty-one. Um, LDR Table five point one, private road, reduction of private road radius to eighty feet. The request is for a variance from the requirements of LDR Table five point one, which requires a one-hundred-foot minimum horizontal radius for residential streets. The applicant is requesting for the radius of the internal private roads to be reduced to eighty-foot minimum from the standard one-hundred-foot requirement as outlined in Table five point one. According to the applicant, the design change was discussed with Greenville County Roads and Bridges, and due to the nature of the development, the reduction does not pose any safety or emergency access constraints. Here is a site outlined in red, and here is a detail showing the areas of variance requests in blue. Here is an image of the site. Um, from SAC, please provide the fire department letter for all three variance requests. The email correspondence from the fire marshal was included in the packets approving, um, these requests. Um, staff recommends approval of the variance as requested.
All right, would you like to speak to this one?
I'll just go over it quickly. I mean, we, we ran it by the fire marshal, and we got the, the truck turn templates from the fire marshal, so we were able to put that in CAD and run truck turns to make sure that the truck could turn safely with the reduced radius, and they are completely fine. So the truck does make it through every single tiny road in the site without obstructing any curbs or buildings or anything, so they are good to go.
Just wait till they park.
And no fire departments within the development, correct?
No, there are no.
The fire station?
The fire station's on like the other side of the Hartness master plan, the newer one that will be going in, but there's not, there's not one like in here.
And that's not Bull and Spring, that's not Pelham, and Pelham is in charge of this site, correct?
Uh, I believe this is Boiling Springs. Or, sorry, sorry, you are right. This is.
You're listing Pelham Baysville.
You're right, you're right. Sorry, it's Pelham Baysville.
Yeah.
None, none of this exists. This is still designed?
Still designed, yes, sir.
All right, so you lose one lot and make two others a little smaller. Is that a hardship?
Yes, and, well, we feel that this goes in hand with the feel of the development. If a tighter radius, it'll be slower. We can carve a area around the boulevard of that entryway tighter, and it's gonna make a better feel for the development and the. entryway tighter, and it's gonna make a better feel for the development and the overall feel of the hardness master plan.
And you didn't know the 100-foot radius thing when you designed this?
No, we did, we had it in there and it was approved in the final development plan, but the variance was missed in the packet.
Wow.
So it was submitted not within specs?
Technically.
So yes, okay.
This is a pri- private on the road though?
So we, so we approved this, and all, and all of a sudden, we're being asked now to do a variance? You guys, I just, this is wild.
Feels like we're being asked this rubber stamp.
Yeah.
Alright.
Somebody's job with these things.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
There's nobody here in opposition to this. The fire marshal's approved it, the county's approved it, there, there's, there's no detriment to the public in this whatsoever. I, I'm not perfect, but I demand perfection in everyone I deal with, so I'm disappointed in you that you didn't, you weren't perfect. This is, uh, we, we approve variances on screening on HVACs and, and don't talk about it for two seconds. This doesn't affect anybody in any negative way whatsoever. I would make a motion to approve the variance.
Alrighty, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Matt, Mr. Hammond made a motion to approve. Mr. Matasevic has the second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say that we keep, we keep seeing variances coming before us because somebody has made a mistake. And who is making the mistake? Nobody can answer that question.
No, the screening is a different subject.
There's no consequence.
You know, so why do we keep having these come before us? And why can't we correct the problem that's causing us to have these come before us?
Well, I believe everyone now knows these problems, and we'll look out for them in the future, I'd assume.
What, what variances are you referring to?
Well, Frank, Frank mentioned screenings.
Well, the screening variances, they're, they're not caught, there's, that's just...
But, but that's, that's, that's something that's come before us in the past, and, you know...
That, that's because that's a requirement of the land development regulations, and there, it, it's a, it's a building, nine times out of 10, it's a building that's been existing that's being changed or converted, and so it's not that it's being missed, it's that it's being caught at that point.
Yeah.
It was built prior to the land development regulations.
Change of use.
So it's existing non-conforming.
But this one is, but this one is missed.
This one is separate, this is, this was different.
It's different, three, like I said. It's different.
Well, those are, they're perfect, please vote no.
And it, and it was discussed in the final development plan review.
Well, I'm not trying to be perfect.
Out of order, Mr. Hammond.
I'm just, you know, I mean, is it, is it a calculation in somebody's computer program that's slightly off that causes this, or...
To be fully honest, I think my team, just when we did the final development plan upfront, we had this full thing set up, we had variance, I had a variance tracker with all the fire marshal and the county staff and everything, and I, I really think that just the variance applications were not applied for with the preliminary plat.
So you intended on these being out of compliance and then asking for a variation?
Well, we intended on applying the, for the variance at the very beginning, and they got approved with staff and the fire marshal at the final development plan, which was before the preliminary plat. And then I realized the day when I came in for planning commission that they were not on the preliminary plat docket for the variance to be there, and that's when I realized they were missed in the submittal process in the county portal. We didn't intend to submit something, and then retroactively we'd be like, hey, we submitted, and it was wrong.
That's not what I'm, that's not what I meant, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Phillips?
I think we missed this also, as well, but I do believe I remember that being a part of the application. I guess I missed the, why it wasn't, weren't there variances also, but I...
It was, it was on the FDP at the beginning for the, the PD modification.
Oh.
A while ago.
That's...
And then, so it was on there, but it was missed when we actually came in to do the official prelim plat, I believe, last month, or two months ago.
Which, okay, which...
So it got missed on that.
We didn't see because there'd already been a...
Because you had already seen it on the final development plan first, yes.
And I can say for sure, because I just talked to my local fire chief this week, and we discussed some things, that, that, that radius being 80 feet is, should be plenty feasible for a fire truck.
Yes, it will.
So, you know...
I'm not, I'm not concerned as much about that as I am just about the, the process here.
Alright, if y'all done, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Any other discussion that's applicable? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no.
No.
No. Did you say no? Alright, Ms. Manning said no as well, so it passes five to three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is VA 2025-152. Harkness Village Center LDR table 5.1, private alley request. This application is requesting a variance from the requirements of LDR table 5.1, which requires the minimum horizontal radiance for a private alley to be 50 feet, based on a crown of a fourth inch and no super elevation. The applicant is requesting for the radius of the internal private alleys to be reduced to 30-foot minimum from the standard 50-foot requirement outlined in table 5.1. According to the applicant, the design change was discussed with Greenville County Roads and Bridges, and due to the nature of development, the reduction does not pose any safety or emergency access constraints. Here is the site outlined in red, and here is a detail showing the location of the variance requests. Here is an image of the site. The same SAC comment as the previous two variances also applies here, and I don't have a recommendations slide, apparently. Staff recommends approval of this variance request as well.
Go back to the diagram, please, ma'am, I don't see alleys.
There's one on the middle right side. It's the back little alley, the fire truck's not gonna have to go back there, the fire truck's gonna stay on the main road.
Sure.
And those are just alley-fed units, so it's really, the only, only thing going back there is the cars going back to park. Yep, that one right there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
What, what's on the other side of, of, to the right of the property line there?
There's actually, there's actually nothing back there, it's undeveloped. There's a house to the south off Highway 14, and then behind it, there's nothing. It's just undeveloped.
So to the immediate right, all that white space, it's just trees, woods?
Uh, yeah, you can see right there, it's just undeveloped.
It's undisturbed buffer.
Yeah, we have an undisturbed buffer on our site, and then the property line, and then there's, as you can see, there's nothing there.
Looks like your, all those lots would get a little smaller.
Do what?
All those lots would get a little smaller.
If the radius was not decreased?
No, you, I thought this thing said the whole alleyway goes from 50 to 30.
Oh, no, 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 it's just the radius of the curve goes from 50 feet.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the radius, the alley width stays the same.
I'm okay, well, alleyway.
Yeah, it's, it's the same thing as the...
Alright, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the variance.
Alright, Ms. Franklin made a motion to approve this variance. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammond has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no.
No.
Mr. Parram and Ms. Phillips. And Ms. Manning. I never hear you.
She's rather sheepish.
Yeah, what's Robert say about that? Thanks, sir.
Thank you, I apologize for the miss.
I'm sorry.
Well, you missed this too? Alright. Mr. Carlisle, planning report.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, we thought we'd start with giving you an impact fee feasibility study update. Chairman Bickel, Vice Chair Manning, and staff, including myself and Hisha Gamble and other department heads, met with Carson Bice on September 15th. He interviewed those of us in attendance for information about the departments that may benefit from impact fees, that included the sheriff's department. Parks and Rec, roads and bridges and fire. With staff, planning staff is also working with him to provide information about the number of units that have been approved over the past five years. So that, that information will be going to him, and once he has that, he'll be able to generate his report, which we expect in about two to three weeks, so...
No, no, who benefits from impact fees? The benefits of the impact?
So the departments, whether or not they, they'll benefit will be considered in the report, but the departments that were participated in this meeting was the sheriff's department, parks and rec, roads and bridges, and fire.
Yeah, that's part, part of the feasibility study is who, who would benefit and how. So that's why we do the cheaper feasibility study.
What were the other alternatives? Options, possibilities?
No, they're considering everything.
Oh, they are.
They will come back to us.
That's just two is there.
Those were the representatives from the departments.
Gotcha, okay.
They will come back to us with recommendations.
Alright.
On who would benefit and how. So we just have to wait for this report in two to three weeks, and it'll come to us.
Correct.
And I'll send it out to everybody, or he will, he will.
So those were the four, those were the four groups, the, the groups that attended, actually, gotcha.
Correct, correct.
And to answer the other question, they had already met with schools. Apparently, it's not legal for us to combine them, even though it makes the most sense because we do the permitting. I don't disagree. They are looking into that aspect of it, that if the schools did get impact fees, that, you know, it, it would have to come through council, I mean county, because when they get the permit, and we'd also get a fee off of that, but that's another subject. So, no, schools have met with the same consultant earlier that day, so we have, you know, he is supposed to look into the legality of it. Oh, I agree, no, that's, I've, I've already met with some school board members on this. It's like I have nothing better to do, though.
So we'll, we'll make sure you get hold that report once it's prepared, and y'all can review it. And then additionally, we have another Planning Commission workshop on Monday. It's coming Monday, September 29th, it'll be at noon here in council chambers, not in this room, but in council chambers. John Deloche with SCAC will be coming to provide training, and we'll be providing lunch for y'all that are able to attend, so hope to see as many of you there as possible.
Yeah, this is for continuing ed credits, for those who need them.
Yes, that is true, and you'll be able to get education credits for this as well.
Is that at 11:30?
12. Yep, and then I'm gonna turn the time over to Josh, one second.
So the last item here, we've had two new hires over the last couple weeks in the zoning department. We have one staff member, Amelia, moved back to Charleston, so we lost her, and we've been, we've replaced that position with a gentleman named Jordan Lee. He actually comes to us from the E911 department, so he's very familiar with, with Greenville County, a lot of the processes that we currently have, and it's, it was a great fit. And then we've hired, we actually have a new position, it is a zoning inspector position. This gentleman is Ben Mormon, he is joining us, and he will be doing our sign inspections, our sign reviews, and also some commercial site inspections as well. So it was a new position we created for that, to be able to cover some of the basics that we've been missing, not missing, but just kind of relying on other departments to do.
There's a lot of illegal signs out there.
Well, we're trying to work on that, and, you know, a lot of the commercial site, site inspections, we, we have to rely on other departments because we don't have the staff to be out in the field, so this is just one more person out in the field to be able to help provide us some of the, the field aspects that we, that we need.
Good.
And then lastly, there'll be an updated organizational chart that will be sent out once it's finished being, being put together, so... His name is Ben Mormon.
Mr. Carlisle, you don't want to go over this at all? The planning report?
It's submitted to you, if you want, if you have questions about it, we can go through it.
Anybody have a question on the planning report?
But I, I do.
Mr. Matasevic.
Where, where do we stand with the Mountain Creek overlay district, and where is that headed?
I'll let Jonathan speak to that.
Yeah, just turn it on.
Just scream boldly. Well, just come up to the front.
So you saw Suzanne, who spoke with you earlier, she's been working very closely with community, along with Mr. Austin Loveless, and they have been taking feedback from the community on the final draft of the ordinance. Yes, and they have a deadline that they presented the community with for final feedback from all the different community leaders. When all that has been finalized and collected, it'll be submitted to the county attorney for review, so we hope to be done with this pretty quickly. Any further questions?
Did I answer your question?
What's pretty quickly in, in numeric terms?
Well, I apologize, I don't have my project management software, I mean, to my best recollection, at the moment, I'll say within a few weeks, hopefully.
Ken, I think it's probably based on the community and when they're happy with it, and when they say, go to staff, only because I, I know what it was like when we did our area plan, and they go to staff and they get everything straightened out. I know the, the members that have been working pretty hard on it want to make sure the community's happy with it, and they see it, and everything's like they want it. It's not a, they want quality instead of getting it out, they want to make sure it's exactly what they want, and then it has to go through, well, it, it's an overlay, it'll have to go through like the whole three-month process with county council, first reading, second reading, that sort of thing, more than likely?
Correct, yes, yep.
Okay.
Because it'll be an amendment to the zoning ordinance, there'll be language that'll be added, similar to the Scuffle Town rural conservation.
So approximately three months after it's been deemed ready to go.
Is it possible to see a draft of that soon?
You can see the, the working draft of it as soon as we can turn that around to you. We can send it to you tomorrow if you like.
That'd be great, thank you.
Any other questions from staff?
I was just gonna say, thanks, I liked the, what you sent, the blank message, short and sweet, to the point, had some good numbers in it.
And I'd like to also publicly thank, I've already sent Draper an email for adding the photographs to our reports, our, our packets, I've been asking for that since day one, and it happened, so whoever's responsible for that, thank you, that helps us.
And we're glad we could provide that for you, give the credit to staff for including the photos, they went and go out into the field and take, just slip them into your reports for you, so they did good there.
I got one quick point, Mr. Matasevic.
Sir?
How many subdivisions haven't been approved in the last five years?
Well, according to the, the thing that I got, it looks like 140-ish.
Alrighty. At least it's not 667.
662, but who's counting? No, we're counting, that's right.
I'm five of them. I just hope you update your whatever. Alrighty, any other old business? Any new business?
A special accommodation to our chairman for getting us through the meeting without a bathroom break. Thank you, Chairman Bickel.
Mr. Chair.
I hope you don't have that on tape.
Mr. Chair, just to point out, we do have on the agenda the comprehensive plan, five-year update, open space plan, though we have received comments from several of you, and we are working through those, these are on the agenda tonight for a vote of approval, if you want to, my guess is it'd probably not be, and if you decide to hold on that, you would need to hold them till our next meeting.
And I'll second it.
To hold both, both of them, just for clarity?